Through a non-public session personnel, we have a couple of nominations, two support staff and one co-courting.
We have two sets of minutes, minutes of September 27th, 2017, I'd entertain a motion to accept this statement.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do the same for the minutes of October 2nd.
Moved to approve?
Seconded.
All in favor? Quick and easy. Okay, we're gonna change it, probably jump the floor number one, we're gonna start there first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I thought that we would, since everyone got tax bills last week, I thought we would walk through the tax bill portion of, and the school portion of the tax bill, and so that folks here at the meeting and folks at home can understand the impact of the school, both the high school and elementary school, and the state tax and the local property tax on the local tax bill. So, the first handout you have is the memorandum that we do every year for the, for the school board members and the, also the school board members at the high school. You can see Maureen Evner, Barbara Noyes and Tim Nowrow represent the community at the high school, they get copies of this. And in, in common years, these memos come and they go, and, but I did have an opportunity we, I had to share this with the selectmen and the budget committee, I believe last Wednesday night, we met in the selectmen's office to go over the, the tax bill. So, you can see the impact, dramatic increase, the entire rate for the town is up four dollars and thirty-nine cents, seventeen point four percent. The impact, the town, which is the town hall and, and police, fire and all of those services that come from the town, that portion is up two dollars and thirty-two cents, school is up a dollar ninety-three, and the state is up three cents, and the county is up eleven cents. So there's the breakout of, of the four thirty-nine where it went. If you look at the combined school state rate, we went, we moved from fourteen fifty-eight to sixteen fifty-four, and that's up a dollar ninety-six or thirteen point four percent. And then the impact of the two schools, you can see Plymouth Elementary's portion's up a dollar fifty-nine, the high school is up thirty-seven cents, so that's where the, the one ninety-six comes from. The next handout for you is, and a lot of folks have called and, and I've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of folks, where do these numbers come from? Well, if you remember last budget time, we, we had predicted in budget draft number three, that the operational budget alone was gonna go up a dollar twenty-two a thousand. And so, everyone, everyone knew that. And over at the elementary, at the high school, it was gonna go up one cent per thousand. So we walked into district meetings up a dollar twenty-three. Then the Warren articles passed, the, that most, the majority of the Plymouth Elementary one was a Warren article for the support staff, and that was the two things, one was the cost of living and also we had to make some market adjustments, because we had slipped behind fairly dramatically in a num, and to the point where we couldn't hire custodians and, so we made those adjustments in the collective bargaining agreement as a community. Also, there was a faculty collective bargaining agreement over at the high school, and that was approved, and that cost about a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Well, Plymouth pays twenty-three point two eight percent, so basically twenty-three cents of every dollar, the high school comes from Plymouth, so that drove it up nine cents. So when you, when you take, when we walked out of district meetings on March 14th, we were up a dollar forty-four. Then what happened was the state made some changes, because of that court case, we knew our adequacy would begin the process of declining over a period of years, and so you see we lost a hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and one dollars, and that was twenty-seven cent impact on the tax rate. We had special ed, catastrophic aid was cut by sixteen thousand seven hundred, that's a four cent impact. At the high school, when I say cut, we're entitled to a certain amount of money by law, but the state is only going to generate X amount of dollars, so everyone takes a per-capita piece of that, of that money. So, the high school got seventy-four thousand dollars less than they expected from the state, so that added another four cents to the rate. So that gets us to a dollar seventy-nine. The other seventeen cents is made up of some revenue adjustments at both schools, and a lot of that is federal and state money that comes into, into the district. So, that really is how we got to where we got in terms of the school portion of the, of the town tax rate. Folks have called me up about the town portion, and we, we have no influence on the town portion, that's, that's controlled by the selectmen, who folks elect, and then there's a separate district meeting. The district meeting happens to be at the school, but that's, that's merely the use of the gym, because it's, this is the town's community center. The next sheet that you have, shows you the percentage of the tax rate that goes to either the, the school or the town. So, and, and you could look at it this way, fifty-five point nine cents of every dollar that people pay in property taxes go to the two schools. The remainder of the money either goes to the town or to the county. So that's, so we've, we've tracked this for lots and lots of years, just so we know the impact of everything that we do. We've been as high as sixty-two point three cents of every dollar, and we've been as low as fifty-two point three cents of every dollar, depending on the year, so. But a, a dramatic change, there's about a, you know, about a two cent change from the previous year, which shows you the impact of the town. Next page shows you the, the adequacy, these are, these are real live figures. So, I just looked at the last four years, and over that period of time, the town, the town of Plymouth, and this is distribution to, to our two schools, has lost over three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars in adequacy. And that's a reflection of the court case that came and said, the state has got to pay the per, per capita adequacy for every child in the state. Remember, they capped it on some communities, and then would give foundation aid to property poor states, property poor cities and towns. So basically, what they, the court said was, you gotta pay for every kid the same amount of money, just as the law states, and then if there's any money left over, you can spread it around. Well, the state hasn't increased the amount of money they have in the formula, so what they've done is they've paid for every, every child per the court, but also there's less foundation aid to spread amongst the property poor communities. So all of us on the property poor list are gonna take deductions, and I think it's gonna go out over ten years. So, we can expect that adequacy will continue to decline unless there's a dramatic increase in state revenue toward, toward the schools. And the last sheet that's there for you, this was actually the Goldenrod Sheet at the, at the budget hearing. This is where we, we are in the multipurpose room, and we talk about the budget, and this is the night that people really get to ask questions. And this is sort of the worst canary, scenario that, that we do. And basically, what we said was, we were losing unreserved fund balance, which was a one-time revenue. Our adequacy grant, we thought was only gonna be decreased by forty-seven thousand, and ended up adding an extra seventy-four. Regular ed and, and play payments, that's the group that helped support the, the afternoon program, that, that went, that was down sixty-three thousand. Spent tuition, we projected we'd be down that amount in earnings, so we were walking in with a loss for revenues of, of sixty-four cents per thousand. And then the appropriation increases, we had retirement stipends, we had an awful lot of people retire last year. We had tuition increases, that would be in special ed, speech, P T O T, transportation, again, those are all special ed expenses. Health insurance, thirty-two thousand, and then the New Hampshire Retirement System, sixty-three. You remember that the state used to subsidize teacher retirement by up to forty percent. They've completely pulled out of that business now. And, and, and so, all the retirement system costs now are borne in the local budgets. So when you add that up, it was four hundred and thirty-six thousand, which meant a dollar one per thousand. So when you add those two totals, it was a worst-case scenario of one sixty-five. We ended up at one fifty-nine, but we, we sort of knew that we were a little bit in trouble. But again, we went to school district meeting with that data, you guys were there, you know, there were twenty or so people there, and we were in and out in about seven minutes. So I remind folks, you know, how important those meetings are, that if you really wanna have to say, not only in educational policy, but how much it all costs, the budget hearing and the school district meeting are the nights to come, and we'll answer any questions and go through anything you need, Mr. Chairman. So, that's, that's the long and the short of it.
Any questions for Mark? Is privilege on the floor, questions? Thank you. Principals report.
On October seventeenth and eighteenth, at Plymouth Elementary School, had a visit from the poetry guy, Ted Shai. He shared his poetry and his enthusiasm for writing with our students, grades two through five participated in a, in a two-day poetry workshop, and as with every writer who comes to visit, they learn that a lot of writing is about revising, and he did a very creative job with that. Students and parents especially enjoyed writing poetry together at poetry, at the parent night after that. On October twentieth, the P E S Jazz Band performed in a benefit concert at Plymouth Regional High School to help raise funds for the high school music department trip to Hershey Park. The concert included performances from the P E S Jazz Band, Hampton Elementary School's Jazz Band, the high school Jazz Band, and concluded with a performance of Sweet Caroline by all three groups. The P E S Jazz Band includes Nate Warren, Lydia Marinowski, Anna Apuriano, Jack Sullivan, Anton Smith, Ethan Gerard, Laurel Mason, Lauren Cacerino, Abigail Park and Upana Elaine. We have a few things from our innovative integration team. We, the team which includes Julie Panis, Jeff Lines, Beth Wilkie, Carol LaVassar, along with some assistants from our assistant superintendent, Dr. Ethel Gaitis, wrote a, just a small New Hampshire Department of Education grant for Legos robotics, robotic kits and, and an after-school coach. We got the little grant, but we're hoping that really establishes grade three through five after-school enrichment program with the robotics. Both Julie Panis and Jessica Watchkin will support a team, and we're excited for that to start up. At our last faculty meeting, teachers had an opportunity to play around with our new Google Expedition Kits that can take our students on virtual reality tours anywhere in the world and beyond. Such innovative resources provide a different angle of looking at content for our different learners. Again, that was written with a grant from Dr. Gaitis. Two years ago, Carol LaVassar, our technology coordinator, launched a student tech team. Members of the team demonstrated expertise and interest in technology. The student team basically checked all of the Chromebook and iPad stations in the building, great real-world experiences. This year, that team has expanded to an S A U Y team with Generation Yes. This endeavor will put students in roles as leaders with our innovative resources. In the grand picture, these hands-on experiences will help them on their learning paths to careers and, and beyond. I love the collaboration and networking with other students outside of the building, and Gen Yes is a great learner-centered model. Again, thank you to Ethel Gaitis and our S A U forty-eight technology team for making this happen. The P E S Gen Yes team includes grade five students, Caroline Frost, Caitlin Picard, and grade six students, Maya Wingstead, Sydney Valenti, Brennan Johnson and Charlie Peters. And you probably saw the front page of the Record Enterprise, we had a great Thursday, October twenty-sixth, before the weather shifted. We had both the first graders and the eighth graders walk downtown for different field trips. The first graders walked first to the fire station for a hands-on session with persi, fire safety, and then they strolled over to the beautiful Peas Library for a story as well, and if they did not have a library card, it was a great chance for them to get a library card. They had lunch on the green, I don't know if you had a chance to see them, it was awesome. And then they walked over to the Plymouth Historical Society, where they have a school committee primarily of retired teachers, so they really knew how to organize the whole three, three sessions. At the Historical Society, they were able to hold, she, they passed her on this old twine ball, and the kids got a chance to figure out what that was, and then she put the casing over it, and the kids had the chance to realize that at Plymouth, baseballs were constructed and, and gloves. So it was a, you know, it was a real tactile way for them to, to learn about their community. At the town hall, the students, I have to say, were, there was a lot going on, but they were really fascinated with the jail cells, and they never realized that below, that if you look there, the bars are all right there, those buildings that used to be the courthouse. So, that was a really fun, fun piece. And then on the green again, Mrs. Judy Floyd showed our first graders about the Boy Scout statue that holds water for the birds and for the, for other animals. She pointed out the elm trees that have been replanted from the, the Dutch elm disease, and then a tribute to Nathaniel Hawthorne, and she noted that you'll learn more about him in high school. So, after the sessions, the students went back to the Historical Society for homemade cookies, which were unexpected and wonderful. It just doesn't get any better, it really was great. Thank you to our first grade team of teachers for making learning real and tangible for our learners. Mrs. McLeod was the real coordinator with that, and Mrs. Kilduff and Mrs. Carlson, they follow up back at school with great integration of all of the important skills. Also, I wanted to say thank you to the Historical Society School Committee, Janice Chippin, Rondi Pike, Gammon, Mary Baldwin, Lisa Lundari and Judy Floyd, it's great. And then on the other side of town, we had our eighth graders, they walked down to Plymouth State University's Meteorology Department. Two of the P S U undergrads, as well as Dr. Hoffmann, introduced our students to the resources at Plymouth State University and how the students there use them. They worked in the broadcasting studio, attempting to do live weather forecast, they visited the TV room where the entire wall is covered with monitors, showing different visual representations of the weather data being collected. It was very exciting there that day, because they were starting to see the storm approaching, so it was kind of an exciting day for them. This all ties into a unit here back at school on weather and climate, as the students will be creating their own weather maps and forecr, forecasts in the next few weeks. We are hoping to work with P S U in the future to launch a weather balloon, and I wanted to just say thank you to Mrs. Weatherby for that collaboration with the university. A few important dates coming up, on Wednesday, we have our annual Veterans Day Assembly, first thing in the morning, and we'll have muffins and coffee with the veterans afterward, you're most welcome, as are all parents. Thursday, we have no school for parent-teacher conferences, and Friday, no school in honor of Veterans Day. I handed out a, an invitation to our annual Thanksgiving luncheon. Kelly's done a great job with the schedule, she always does that, and it's on the fourteenth and the fifteenth, it'd be great to see you guys there. We have Thanksgiving break, and then right after that, November twenty-eighth, we have Rachel's Challenge coming, we, we have a, have a system, we have them come every other year, and then November thirtieth, our grade eight students will take the PSA pleas for the first time, so that's exciting.
I'm sorry, we're with the date of Rachel's Challenge?
That was November twenty-eighth, and then November thirtieth, we have the eighth grade students taking the PSA pleas.
Hi.
Hi.
So a few quick safety athletic updates, since our previous board meeting, we actually ended up having an after-school fire alarm, which is, was not planned, but was actually great to see, and everybody did exactly as they were supposed to do, our Parks and Rec program, and accounted for all the students, we had a volleyball game going on at the time, so all of those athletes, coaches, spectators evacuated, and as always, fire did a great job, it ended up being an issue with the vent, but good to get that in, in that situation. Coming up on November sixteenth, we will have an off-site evacuation drill planned with, with the high school, in conjunction with them, where we will evacuate and then go over to their facility, they in return then will come over to ours and just practice that piece of it. We also just recently conducted a secure classroom lockdown drill last week, which went very well, kids and staff did a great job, and we are working with John Francis to conduct one of our alerts app on the smartphones test, as soon as we can just work out a couple of logistics there and test that out as well. Back on Friday, October thirteenth, we had the firefighter fill assembly, and that was capped off that National Fire Safety Prevention Week. And as always, with props, puppets, a lot of humor, the students really get some great information, learn about, a lot about fire safety, not only here at school, but on the home front as well, and things that they can do to prepare, to avoid, and to just take care of themselves and their families. Our students in grades kindergarten through four also received fire safety activity booklets, which they're able to take home, and again, I just wanted to, many thanks to Deputy Chief Tom Morrison, who came and attended the assembly along with a couple of firefighters, and it was good for the students to all of a sudden hear their beepers go off and have to depart to go take care of something. And, and we had a variety of visits from the fire department throughout the week as well, including even after school with our Parks and Rec, which was great, they had the fire truck even out there for them after school, and they got to practice with the hose and have that, have that experience, so we always appreciate that. Athletically, all of our fall sports have officially come to a close, as always, our coaches and athletes worked hard throughout that entire season, had some fun along the way, and many thanks go out to those students for their efforts, also to the parents who continually support them and the coaches and come and cheer them on, or even if simple things is providing some Gatorade pizza at the end of the season and helping out with those things, greatly appreciated. Want to take a moment and thank all of our coaching staff, our soccer coaches, Will Abbott and Riley Donovan, field hockey coaches, Deb McManus, Alyssa Avery, Macaulay O'Malley, cross-country coaches, Kevin Greenler and Kate Hoynan, volleyball coaches, Veronica King, Jen Weatherby and Jen Deluge, and our football coaches, John Ramsey, Stefan Bradette and Bill Booker. We're very fortunate to have a great group of adults working with our kids through these programs. So coming up soon, on Monday, November thirteenth, physicals for those students who may still need them for winter participation will be offered right here at P E S's nurses' office, and our winter sports, which include boys and girls basketball for both grades five and six, and then teams for grade seven and eight. We have wrestling and cross-country skiing, and the basketball teams will begin their practices on Monday, November thirteenth. Cross-country ski practices will begin after Thanksgiving, and at this time, wrestling practices still were to be determined, but all coming very soon, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Consent items, claims and payroll, have you signed off on the sheet? There's not many of them in there.
No, I think we have four signatures.
Correspondence, anything more? Discussion items, fiscal year eighteen budget update.
Yes, we have expenditure reports that have been passed around like this. All in all, it's gonna be very tight, as it usually is in Plymouth, we're hemorrhaging a little bit in special education right now, the number of days that we have, and demands on, on the program, so we're going to really tighten up in terms of discretionary spending. Not asking for a budget freeze, but Julie and I have spoken about tightening up and making some good decisions down the stretch so that we don't impact things later in the spring, so. But it will be, it'll be a tight year. The upside of that, if there is one, is that last year, we had a very similar year, and we don't have a large unreserved fu, we didn't have a large unreserved fund balance, as you, as you saw. So, this year, we won't be dealing with, with all of that money that went back and artificially took the tax rate down. So, this'll be another one of those years, there's not gonna be a lot left over at, at the end of the year, so that's the upside of running very, very close, as well as we didn't over-budget in the year. Our revenues are on target, we conservatively looked at that. We got some calls about the Pembroke situation, and could that happen to us? Sure, hope it doesn't. And by example, I think when you look at our revenues, we, I think there may be a hundred thousand dollars in there for tuition from other districts, those are the Ellsworth kids and, and other kids that may be tuitioned in here. So we try and be on the, the shorter side of that, so we don't run into a situation where we've over, overestimated revenues and we either have to, have to cut programs on appropriation side or raise taxes, so, you know, hopefully, we'll continue to do a good job budgeting, so we don't get ourselves in that situation.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? Fiscal year nineteen draft budget preparation.
Julie and staff at the elementary school and I will begin the process of putting together a draft budget for you that you will get next month, and I'm, I'm wondering if the board has any guidelines in terms of, of, of a number, you know, the budget can't go higher than this, can't go lower than that, just general things that, that we need to look at, obviously, the, the drivers for us have been, you know, looking at, looking at state aid, also looking at our class sizes and, and looking at everything that we do. You know, a perfect example of that is we have a thirty thousand dollar subsidy in the appropriation side of the budget toward the after-school program. So what that means is we raised thirty thousand dollars in property taxes to help support that program. Numerous people have called and said, you know, why don't, why don't the people that use the program pay for the program? So those are sort of the questions I think we're gonna get from the community because of the increase in the tax rate. So we're gonna look at all of those programs and, and lay out options for you, and the ultimate decision is, you know, we'll present a budget to the community, but the ultimate decision rests on the folks who show up at the school district meeting, whether, what we do. You know, it's really hard for me to, there's a disconnect, I think, that, that, you know, somehow, the folks here at the table set the tax rate. Well, we, we present budgets and we present Warren articles, but every registered voter in the town has a vote at the school district meeting, so that, those are the folks that set the tax rate, so. And we've had nights where people have come in and said, you need to do this, or you need to do that, so, you know, the last few school district meetings have not been well attended, and perhaps we're gonna be on the upswing in terms of attendance at those meetings.
Well, if we're looking at adequacy continuing to drop, we're already gonna be in the negative looking at this budget.
Yep.
So ideally, you'd want to have as little increase as you possibly can, which means we're gonna have to cut something somewhere in order to do that.
Yeah, so we'll put together a base for you, and then lay out some options for you, and we'll look at, and be, very frankly, we'll look at classes that could be, two sections of a grade, and we'll look at the cost of three sections of a grade, and then, and then just let the community have its say, and we'll go from there.
Could you provide an estimate of what the impact to parents would be if the subsidy for the after-school program were to be dropped from the budget, so we could consider that?
Yep, we could certainly do that, we, we need some help from Park and Rec, because it's a two, it's a two-part piece, so we will contact the Park and Rec folks and say, what does the program look without our thirty thousand dollar subsidy, what's it look like? So, and we'll go from there. And I'm not picking on that program, I'm just saying, those are the kinds of questions that we're now getting from the community, as they begin to look at our budget and say, you know.
Is, is there a benefit to the school of having the, the subsidy? I mean, I, I, I mean, I think it's a great I mean, I, I, I mean, I think it's a great benefit.
Oh, I think it's, having the program is a great benefit to the kids and to the school because you get a lot of the homework clubs and a lot of that thing, and it's a great benefit to, to, you know, and a broader look at it, it's a great benefit to the community because the kids are here. Absolutely, you know. The classic story, if you're doing it for older kids, the classic story is the police are chasing the kids around town because they got nothing to do, and, you know, and obviously an overexaggeration, but those are the kinds of community benefits that you have to wait to, so.
When we're looking at the classroom numbers, if, if it comes down to class sizes, the upper grades look to be more of a, of a lighter number than, than the lower grades, and I think I would never like to cut the lower end of the... Is this 28 on this, is that the number of preschool kids that we have? It's on the bottom, or is...
Yes, that is, and, and those are not all Plymouth.
Okay.
And one of the things you have to remember at the middle school level, grades seven and eight by law, is that we need certified teachers in specific subject areas for, for those kids. Sixth grade, you know, can still be self-contained, but we run a middle school model up there. But seventh and eighth have to be, the core subjects have to be represented by certified folks in those specific areas, as you would want, whether it was the law or it wasn't the law, you would want that in terms of content knowledge and, and the capabilities of the teachers.
Is adequacy gonna decrease the same amount every year for the next 10? Is that what you said, or is it a varied number?
I think over, when I, when I look back at, if the state continues to fund at the level they're funding, and that's the key, and that appears to be a stagnant amount, so they're just gonna take the stagnant amount and then just say, "Okay, this is, this is how much each community gets." And they do that between declaring the property tax, estate tax, I mean, it's a lot of smoke and mirrors, to be honest with you. Still property tax. So I, I think, Frank, the, the pool of foundation aid as we know is just gonna continue to shrink.
Any other questions for Mark? Any other business discussion? No? Privilege of the floor, too. Any questions out there?
Do you know when those meetings for the town talk about the budget?
Yeah, we'll start in December.
In December?
Yeah, we'll, we'll present a draft budget in December, and I'll walk through that, and then that'll be the first night the board sees it, so folks can ask questions that night, but the board wouldn't be prepared to respond to it because the, the real heavy lifting is in the month of January, and then the budget hearing itself is the first, first week in February. So those, it's a January, February timetable, and then the meeting is in March.
Below.
Below, yeah.
Okay, no other comment? No other chain of motion to go into non-public session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all.